Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
I know.
May we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for all of our troops that are overseas and here in the United States? Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, on this Thursday, May 2, 2024. We'd just like to announce that we had an executive session. I will defer to our solicitor, Mr. Randy Flager. Could you give the audience and the folks at home an update?
Yes. Madam Chairwoman, we had executive session. We discussed real property matters and personnel matters and a couple of litigation matters as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flager. Next, we have an announcement, and I'd like to call Bobby Loftus so she can get out of here and get some sleep.
Thank you very much, Ken.
You're welcome.
Bobby Loftus, or Mr. Tax Collector, we had an excellent month. We had 8,201 people pay their taxes in April. Between Saturday, Monday, and Tuesday, we had over 500 people in person. So it was really crowded. In March, we had 1,441 paid. So total so far have paid is 9,642. So we're doing phenomenal. I just gave John two checks tonight totaling almost $1.5 million.
Oh, right! Yay!
Yeah, the amount of money that has come in has been -- people have been super. They're really, really paying. We have 748 left to pay. 11 disabled vets are left to pay. So we're really doing really well.
Well, thank you for that really great update.
Yeah.
And thank you to all the residents that have paid their taxes. We really do appreciate it. I think they'd love to come in and see you.
I don't know about that. I'm tired.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, sure.
How did everybody fit in the new place when they were?
Oh, my gosh, I got such compliments. They were allowed to use the bathroom. They could stay inside out of the heat. I cannot believe how many people did not know we had a park in Warminster. Had no idea that we had a municipal park.
Oh, my gosh.
That's awesome.
I was shocked, shocked. And they said, oh, my God, this is really pretty. They aren't particularly thrilled with the speed bumps because there are six of them. They've counted them. And I've only had one sign stolen. The rest of them are still there. So we're doing well with that. Plenty of room for them because, I mean, with that many people, you know the lines were long. And they went into the room and down and around. So it really worked out well. I thank you very much for your courtesy.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. All right, twofold, two positives.
Two positives already.
Moving the park and people paying taxes.
We haven't started yet, pretty much.
Push your drink.
Next, we have the Warner Park lighting project. It has been completed. And is anybody speaking about that, Ken?
Jess would have been here to speak about that, but I can, if you like. So we finished up the lighting at Warner Park, the football field, and wow, does it look nice, is all I can say. It's well lit. It looks like a professional stadium. And, you know, anybody who has a chance to take a look at that, you'll be very impressed with the money well spent.
And you can register for football and cheerleading now if you go to warminsterpioneers.org. You can check it out in person.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ken.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I see we don't have comments here in the front from the board. I'd just like to make a motion for, as I did last month, to change the public comment today, and if we have to have a separate motion to do it for future, I will make that. For now, today, after land use matters.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0.
Now, will I need a motion for further, for future?
Randy, we need -- excuse me, Mr. Flager, do we need another motion for?
Keep going forward from now on?
Going forward from now?
Sure.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to move permanently the public comment to after land use matters.
Well, we did change it last month, but somehow it just didn't get changed. So now we're on board.
So raise for a second.
Second, second.
All in favor? Yeah, we all kind of did. Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Okay. All right, any other announcements? Who would like to start? Ken, Judy, Janice? Go ahead, Janice.
Okay, I'll get it started.
She looks like she's ready to go. Okay.
I just wanted to do a shout out. Tri-County Athletics Cheerleading is going to be doing a community service project this month and next month if needed. We're going to be putting your addresses on curbs if you're interested. There'll be a sign on the township Facebook page starting tomorrow. So if you're interested in getting that done, we'd be happy to do that for you. So that way, when the police or fire department are coming down your street, they can see your address will be sparkling on the curb. If you don't have a curb, we could do the bottom of your driveway. So thank you. Chuck?
If you haven't gotten over to the Warminster Community Park, they added a second soccer field, a full-size field. What a beautiful field. My daughter plays for Warminster, and it was the first time I have to see the field this year completed. And now that they have two full-size fields, it's a really nice sight. Me growing up playing soccer, we'd never played on fields like this. So it really looks great for the community and our sports here in Warminster.
Thanks for that, Chuck, because it is a beautiful park, and they do really nice work. Judy?
Well, I wanted to let you know a little bit about our library. We're having a Love Your Library Day on June 4 at 7:00 p.m. And I want you to know that the board, the Warminster Advisory Board, Library Advisory Board, took several years to come up with this. They've looked at library management. They looked at the board. They talked to township leaders. They sent out surveys to the community. They had over 500 respondents. And from that, they built a new library five-year plan with a mission statement that says, "Warminster Library provides free access to a diversity of information, arts, culture, and civic resources to improve lives and foster a lifelong love of learning." And welcome. Our library president of the board, Michelle Scichumara, and our friends of the Free Library, Jerry Cholton, are here, too. And there are values that have been identified as the most important by the library board members. The five values are provide a safe and inclusive public space with easy and equal access to resources, defend intellectual freedom, unrestricted personal expression, and unfettered curious minds. We believe that free access to information is essential to the maintenance of a healthy democracy. And we promote the library as a center for community connection and mindful discussion. We value the skills and expertise of the library's staff and volunteers. And there's plenty more in the five-year plan that will have copies for you to read and to present to you at a later date. But right now, we want to invite everybody to come on June 4 at 7:00 p.m. to the Warminster Library. There'll be dignitaries there. There'll be news media there. There will be live music, refreshments, decorations, filming, photography. We're going to have a good time. At 6:45 to 7:15, there'll be music and reception. And then there'll be a presentation of our five-year plan. And Michelle, our president, will be introducing it. So please all come to the library for our five-year plan. It's really took a lot of time and a lot of thought to put into it, and we're very proud of it. Thank you.
Very good announcement, Judy. Thank you. We should all participate in our Free Library. They do an amazing job there, and it's a great crew. Ken?
I already talked about the Warner Park lighting.
Okay.
No other announcements.
All right. I have Park and Rec announcements. 29th Annual Rubber Ducky Regatta will take place on Sunday, May 19, at Kemper Park. Yes, I know Pat's got tickets.
Are you making out, Mike? You selling a lot of them?
Selling them?
Yeah, Mike's got them.
All right. Festivities begin at noon and race at 1:00. Call Parks and Rec to sponsor ducks for a chance to win cash prizes. Warminster Annual Memorial Day Parade is scheduled for May 27, beginning at 10:00 a.m., followed by the parade ending at the Warminster VFW Building on Lewis Drive. To register your organization for the parade, call Parks and Rec at 215-443-5428. They do an amazing, amazing job, and I have to thank, give a big shout out to John Gruber for doing this. He just told me I'm not allowed to sing this year because I really can't.
And we thank John for announcing that.
Yes, thank you.
Which is challenged.
Yes. All right. The Red Cross Blood Drive will take place on June 11 at the rec in Warminster Community Park. Register to donate at redcross.org. Always need blood donations if you can give it. Vendor space and sponsorships for Warminster Day and Touch a Truck, Saturday, September 28, are now open. Contact Park and Rec for more information. Remember, the playground site near the Hollowell Pavilion in Warminster Community Park is an active restricted construction area. It is not safe to enter this area. Anticipated completion is late May. Please follow the Warminster Township Parks and Recreation on Facebook for updates. And that's all I have for that. All right. Oh, he's here. Okay. Next on our agenda is an update on our new firefighters, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Velton.
Not worthy, not worthy. Sorry, I was a little --
That's okay.
-- party there.
You got here just in the nick of time. Joe, for anybody that doesn't know at home, is our emergency manager, emergency manager, and he's going to be giving us a report on the firefighters.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Just to update everybody and the community, we started the program on October 2, 2023, and it's about six-plus months now we've been having the firefighters on the job. They work Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 3:30, and they're generally stationed at that fire station on Madison Avenue. Sometimes we're over at the Hartsfield Station. This depends on what we're doing, the activity levels. Start up a brand-new program of firefighters, career firefighters, from outside the community. So remember, our volunteers are really in tune with our community. They know the apparatus, they know their training, they know their hazards, and we brought in three people not from the community. So there was a lot of onboarding and situational awareness we had to give them. So we did a lot of training on policies and procedures that are in place for our fire companies that are existing so that they could integrate right into that. Went over community layouts, our hazards, our characteristics. And then we went over all the equipment, our air packs that we wear, specialized stuff. We've got to make sure that they're good with that, saws, rescue tools, gas meters. And then we went over the apparatus. So it was kind of following a pattern of the evolution of getting them to actually respond. So when they started on October 2, they weren't riding a fire truck. They needed to get brought up to that spot where our existing volunteer firefighters are highly trained and ready to go. So we did all that. Then we evolved into fire apparatus where they started driver training. And a lot of people, we got a lot of feedback. They'd see us over at Warminster Park or through the community negotiating some of our crazy turns and our tight areas, but knowing, getting to learn the community a little bit better and learning quicker routes if they had a call there. Then we developed hose lines and water supply using hydrants and how that all connects. And once we got that whole picture together and they were certified and trained to operate our apparatus, they were in play and they were responding. That involved getting uniforms, you know, which to start out the program, we got T-shirts, something that made them look uniform. But it evolved to where they're wearing full firefighter dress uniforms. They have pagers on their sides and communications equipment that has basically our lifeline to, you know, prevent a fire. So now we're at the fire rescue response element. And since they've been on the job, we've been dwelling fires, rescues, auto rescues typically, gas leaks inside the house, outside the house. We've had wires calls. We have traffic accidents. They've responded to a couple cardiac arrest incidents where they were fully integrated because they're EMTs. So that's another benefit to having this squad of firefighters ready to go is if we get a cardiac arrest, choking, or a drowning, these are the type of calls where seconds matter. It's how long can you hold your breath, is what we always said. So they've been in play, working with our EMS agency that we have, Central Box Ambulance, which is a phenomenal EMS agency, and they've been working with them through these cardiac arrests and stuff like that. They've also responded out of town, like when, so neighboring communities that they're having a house fire, a structural fire, they're able to respond quickly and fully help those companies that actually come into our township to help us. And that's happened several times already. We had hazmets in one town. We had a dwelling fire in Northampton. We've had a couple calls to Hatborough and Upper Moreland. And it's all kind of like filming this really good picture of how we're helping ourselves here. So we hired three. I wanted five, but we hired three. So that gives us, I still want five. I wanted past tense. So I do that in the director's report that pays attention on trying to measure that metric. Before we had firefighters, what does it look like for turnout time? Turnout time is from when we get dispatched to when we leave the firehouse. That's a turnout time on a truck. So I'm trying to measure that and see that improvement. And we've already seen improvements, and you can see it in my reports. But I took a look at January to April this year, and it was 54 daytime types of incidents. And I compared that to this time period in 2023. We didn't have any, right? We had volunteers. So it looks like our average turnout time with them on duty is 3 minutes and 33 seconds is their leaving the station. Compared to last year was 4 minutes and 47 seconds. Might not seem like a lot, but if you're holding your breath, a minute 13 is a lot longer to hold your breath. Obviously, our goal is to get to 80 seconds, and that comes with more staffing and just getting that evolution going. And the reason we lowered that benchmark over my time period is because we have either three firefighters on apparatus or two because one of them's out doing fire inspections. So instead of waiting for the whole engine company or ladder company show up from where they were at home or whatever, you know, during the day, now we're really kind of waiting for just to fill out that four, that minimum manning of four that we want. So that's the firefighting end of it. But as we know, we don't have fires every day, which is great. So in order to keep that status quo where we don't have fires every day, we do fire inspections. We do fire safety talks at businesses and multifamily complexes. You know, sometimes I go there. And we also do fire prevention in schools, obviously. They happen to get hired Fire Prevention Week, which was great. So they were raised out in the schools doing fire prevention and doing that. The fire inspection program, you see the numbers. When they started, I kind of like got them integrated and shadowing our existing group that was doing the fire inspections. And that worked. That group did great by letting them shadow them, showing them, getting familiar with business owners so it wasn't a shock and just kind of getting some kind of dialogue, you know, going. So they did that. They learned about the inspection program, going to be trained in one of the software and what our businesses look like. Come January, it's us. We're doing it. We own it, right? Up to the end of April, which is my closest good numbers, is we've done, these guys have done about 350 fire inspections, 200-plus in new businesses. Some of them are re-inspections. They billed about 45,000, which is, you know, a backfeed, an alternate funding source for the program. And they found over 400 fire code violations. So, I mean, that's what the intention is, to lower that risk. And they're not out there to cite, like, we're not making money by how many fire code violations we do. We're just trying to eliminate the chance of a fire in that place. And if there is, we want people to get out quick. So they're finding electrical issues, exiting issues, whether it's signage isn't working or there's a blocked exit where, you know, fire happens like that. And then fire systems and then just basic cleanliness, you know, fire preventive cleansing and cleanliness, stuff like that. So they're reducing those risks every day. I only have four pages, so we're good. So along this path that we've had, they've also been interacting with our existing volunteer firefighters, right? And that's the goal, is to have one unified force going out to rescue and, you know, help our residents, whether they're paid or not. We just, you know, we want that to be. So they've been trained, some of the volunteers have been around during the day. They've been trained. We're trying to schedule training with them. And the other way around that is to, I've also sent these guys out to the fire company training events where they do live fire burn trains at fire academies at night just to get integrated with the whole operation. And that's worked out real well. They have been meeting, they have been out in our community. They have been having lunch at different restaurants. They're spending money in Warminster. They're, you know, they're part of the community. They feel like it. And every now and then, when they run into somebody a second time, they get that connection. It's working out. And that takes time. So that's what's going on. The Safer Grant, which actually got this whole thing started, as you know, it ended on March 9. We were able to capture 100% of their salaries since they landed on the job. So that's six months that we got back reimbursed. It was about $115,000, $16,000 we got back. So that being said, some of the goals moving forward are to increase staffing dramatically, not dramatically, but to reduce our turnout time dramatically. If we can get that down to 80 seconds, 1 minute and 20 seconds, that is an average, which means we'll be hitting that mark a lot lower than that. We will have our wheels on the street and responding to those emergencies a lot quicker. Seems like when I'm up here, I always got to, I don't have to go far back from a fire that we just had. And now I'm only going two days back. So that was a daytime fire incident. When I did my interview, like, you know, fight fire, then I do my investigation and all that kind of stuff. But I've probably done 400 fire investigations in Warminster. I don't know how many fires I've actually been to in my life, you know, if that doesn't include. But when I'm writing this down and I'm interviewing 1,200-plus witnesses over the last 11 years and 400 fires, they, I have it in quotes, "I can't believe how fast that fire was. I can't believe it." And I just wrote it down again. I have probably 20 witnesses, one timestamp, that said, "I can't believe how fast that fire was." So part of, you know, inspections, prevention, safety, we're trying to educate people, saying fires fast, fires dark, fires hot, fires everything, get out. Don't let it happen, but get out. So that's kind of our goal. We want to reduce those turnout times, improve our location times, get there fast, get water on the fire, just stop that process from happening, stop it from extending into the house. And the overarching goal is to provide a safe working environment for the crews that I'm setting out, right? So that's a goal. So we also want to, going forward, provide more opportunities for more integrated training with volunteers because they're, they're, right now, I just left, there was a call right now. So these guys are responding to our emergencies now. I want to do more technical type of rescues. Warminster is a technical town. We have hazardous material facilities. We have high water towers. These are technical rescues. Somebody's get trapped, they're calling us. We're going to have to be a response. And that's my summary.
Thank you. Very nice.
I speak fast, sorry.
It was really, it was really, really well-written, and I like that you explained the difference between from before, before we hired firefighters to now and how they've integrated with the volunteers and how you're a cohesive unit.
Yeah.
And you are saving lives. And I understand that your goal is to have two more firefighters. And, you know, if we continue on the financial path we are now, maybe you'll get your, you'll get your dream soon.
I have bigger dreams. Five's the next step.
Baby steps, baby steps, Joe.
Baby steps.
So it's nice. I understand, and I'm glad you put that in your summary, that there's a real camaraderie between the full-time daytime firefighters and the volunteers.
I think that's a big deal.
Yeah, I've heard that from other people. It's a huge deal.
It is.
And I just want to say one thing, Joe. You said the Safer Grant made this possible. It was you, Chris McDonald, Mitch Shapiro, and me and Janice and this board that made it happen. The Safer, the Safer Grant was just a tool to help us make it happen. So, but really, if it wasn't for you guys, then this board, it wouldn't have happened.
Thank you.
You did all the paperwork, all the reports, everything, every questions that we asked you at any of the meetings. You were always well-prepared. You were able to work with us. And you're passionate, too, you know, but sometimes, I understand where the guys are coming from. I understand.
Broken record, right?
Yeah. No, it's all good, it's all good. But thank you for the report. I'm glad that there has, it shows the difference between having the full-time firefighters versus just strictly volunteers. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I do, the final comment is, and I'm only repeating this because you just keyed in on something, are the career guys are actually acknowledging that to the residents of this. They're actually thanking them for paying them to be here.
Oh.
I heard that twice already. I was like, that's interesting.
That's really nice.
Comment for somebody to say that. I've never said it, and I don't, it's not that I didn't mean it, it just never came in my head, and here I say it twice already.
You know, and it's a good point you also brought up because when people have somebody, well, you're an electrician, so, you know, when people have some other people do work for them, might not be up to code or whatever. And we're not out to just cite and find people because we're not, it's not a venue to make money. But it's actually, as you pointed out, it's to make things safer and prevent fires so we don't have to turn out in 88 seconds.
Right.
And that's a good point.
Or get my guys hurt.
Exactly, exactly. It's public safety and our safety as well.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, well put.
Thanks for your time. Anybody else? I'm sorry.
Anybody else have any comments?
Thank you.
All right. Who's going to the Tivity tomorrow?
Janice.
I am.
See you tomorrow.
And Tom has a question for you.
This is more of a comment, following up on Joe's last remark. No, the fire inspection program is not meant to be a revenue driver, but when you get your invoice from us, please pay it for your annual inspection because we now have a stack of them unpaid that are parked at the district court that we will be asking Judge O'Neil to levy the fine so that they are paid. So please pay the stuff when you get it in the mail. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have one more comment for Joe.
Oh, sure.
This is about Joe and the great job that he does.
Yes.
And so you recall, just a couple of years ago, we were using a third-party inspection agency. We're doing the fire inspections. Then we switched to another third-party inspection agency to do the inspections for the fire. And now it's the employees, right? So we've had, three years Joe has had to put this program together, three times. So hopefully, this is the last time he has to do it for a long, long time. Thank you, Joe.
And you're always smiling, too.
I have thoughts.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
That was great, wasn't it? Okay. We have no land use matters tonight. We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We are having public comment at this time. Anybody have anything that they'd like to say? John?
John Creel was 6'7" for Joseph Allen. Just a couple of things. Joe is doing a great job. Came out, he was very informative. We had the back door blocked a little bit. We had moved some stuff around from the other store. He wasn't a hard-nosed about it. He just said, listen, I'll be back, clean it up, boom, boom, this is what I need you to do. And it worked out perfect. I heard from a couple of the other neighbors in the industrial park, he had some issues with them. And I said, listen, you just got to do what the man says. You're going to clean up the area and do it because it's a hazard in some respects. The other thing is, and Joe brought it to my attention, that it was also a good way for him to understand what, what these places look like inside. So if there is a fire, he has a mental idea of what's going on, and go in and attack it without, you know, going in blind, you know what I mean, so to speak? The other thing, the road repairs back in the industrial park went really well, pretty quick. I watched them. They, all the soft spots, they dug out real nice and deep. They filled them in, came back the next day, and then put the top layer back on and all that. That turned out great. You know, I'm sure they have some, you know, tar work or whatever they got to do to finish it up. And then the last thing I told you, Ken, was the sign on Street Road right before Park Avenue going east.
going east, the 45 mile an hour sign's hanging, it's upside down. Okay? And that's it.
Duly noted. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, Lewis Drive looks nice, doesn't it?
The whole, the whole, yeah, that whole part, that Constance, that first half of Constance, that's the older section from Lewis to that before we did the other stuff. But it turned out really good.
That's what happens when you have professionals though.
Really good, nice job. Nice and, they graded out perfect and everything. Guys were quick.
Nice crown on the road, yep.
Couldn't cook, you can't beat it.
Nice, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the nice comments. Anybody else?
Mike Spaduto, 1309 West County Line Road. And I agree with John, I go to therapy over there where they did all that work on the street. Outstanding job, outstanding.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to relay message from some of the constituents. I'm a committee man in District 12. We recently had a death at the Centennial School District, one of my friends and coworkers. And we came up with an idea that we were gonna get a memorial bench put in over at the park where he walked with his kids, his grandkids. And when we went over to research it, the price was outrageous. $1,400 for a bench in Warminster. There was other people that brought it to my attention as well, that they wanted to do something for their family members. This is going back a bit. And I told them to contact Parkham Recreation. And I never heard from them again. And now I know why. Because the price is outrageous. I did some work looking up different companies that do the benches. And most of them come in $500 to $700 under what we're paying. There's also a program at MBIT where there's handicapped special needs students. They make benches. And they can be affordable to the people of Warminster Township. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, there's not too many people wanting, buying benches. And it's a, it's a great gesture and, and I'm all for it. And I'm also aware of the fact, or I was told, there's, the old benches are laying in a warehouse somewhere that could be refurbished and resold back out to people that can afford them. And they could go into the parks because we have so many of them. The wood, you would refurbish the wood and have the, the buyer get a bronze casting, whatever sign they want on there. And they will be responsible if it was, God forbid, stolen or damaged or whatever because we know what's going on in the parks. But I just wanted to bring to your attention, I mean, we gotta understand where we live at. $1,400, there's not that many benches over there. I walk over there when I'm able to walk. And they're really nice, but I think it would be nicer and more people would go into the parks if they were able to afford a bench for their loved ones, someone who has been deceased. And I, if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. And I'll come back and we'll talk about it again.
Thank you for your comment and we will.
This is, this is the factory, the bench factory, the bench factory outlet. They have quite a few that are almost, are almost similar to the ones that we use. And like I said, the prices are different. But my thing is, if we have those special needs kids doing stuff like that, we gotta dis, we gotta put their stuff on display. And I think I'd be the first one to buy one from them and put a bronze casting or whatever. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi. Joey Capozzi, 530 Penrose Lane, home. Work address is 607 Lewis Drive, Suite B. And I have to say something about both, which is why I'm giving you both the addresses. I agree that the gentlemen that spoke, they did a wonderful job over there. But it was hell, pure hell, if you were open for business. And, I mean, we have 20 people an hour coming to our office. It was awful. I mean, and it was unsafe, it really was unsafe. I have no answers for, other than doing it on a Sunday, which nobody's gonna do because of the price. So I don't have an answer, it's just a comment that if something like that is around, being done around businesses, maybe some thought could be put into it ahead of time to, I don't know, somehow make it better. I mean, we were, half of our patients turned around and went home. They just couldn't get to it. And I understand, it needed to be done. It needed better planning somehow for the, for the business owners. Our doctor was beside herself, just, you know, people were coming, they needed care. And they couldn't get to us. It was only for about three hours, I have to say that, you know. Monday, this past Monday was the worst of it. When they were doing the milling, wasn't good either, but it was a little bit better than the paving. And again, I know it has to be done, I'm glad it's done. But I kinda wish they could have done it off-hours. Where, and it must have impacted other businesses too, I mean, not just us. But we have a lot of people coming in, you know? So anyhow, just food for thought. Maybe it'll help somebody else for future, you know? Too late for us. So secondly, at home, John's better at this than I am. I keep moving away from the mic, sorry. We have a big problem at our house. The foundation is cracking. You're talking.
Yeah, John Capozzi from 530 Penrose Lane. We've had an issue for, for a while with the, the end of our house, the gable end of our house where it's close to the easement, where the 48-inch stormwater pipe runs through. Now, I know that that has now been turned over to the municipal authority. We did reach out to the municipal authority, they are looking into it. I have spoken to, to Dalton over there. Dalton, George, yes. Keep saying George first, I, I work with a couple of guys named Dalton, last name. But anyway, there was always slight cracks in the foundation. I was told different things, that the way the houses were built back in the 70s, that they only poured the corners and they only, and then they went back and they excavated between the corners and then, so now you have not a continuous footing, but what they call a, you know, just a cold stop without, without reinforcing rods. And that leads to possible movement or cracking. Anyway, with the, with the cracks, all of a sudden, it just got worse. I mean, what was maybe a mortar joint opening up and a little bit of caulking in there. I was doing some weeding on Saturday a week ago and now it's about two inches wide. And it follows the steps of the foundation. I have a parole space. The house next to me, on the other side of the easement, they set a little higher, they have a full basement. They don't have any issues. All the other houses from my house down are all slabs. So there's like two or three things going on. I mean, there's either movement from the ground from that water pipe. And I have been told that when that water pipe is full to capacity and everybody that's part of the township knows that when the pipe gets full, the streets flood. So that pipe has been full many times, street has flooded many times. The Whittier basement has been improved, but it failed last time. And I know that's on the agenda to maybe get fixed a little bit better a second time around. Craig is well aware of that Whittier basement. They also put out a really extensive engineering report on what to do to improve, you know, the flooding and the piping in our, in that neighborhood. Everything from bigger pipes to more pipes. And of course, everything goes into a, like a 25-year PennDOT pipe under Merges Road. So no matter what we do, it's, it's gonna be this problem. But I was also told that when that water rushes through the pipe, and maybe, I'm looking at you, Ken, because of your extensive background knowledge of geology.
Thank you. I'm not so sure. I wanna take this question.
But I, but I was told that when the water rushes through that pipe, if there's any cracks in the pipe that takes in groundwater, it's like this vortex that just brings in the groundwater, which when water's moving, is moving dirt, creating sinkholes. And Warminster, when it was under their authority, they had filled a sinkhole in right behind us. It's on our neighbor's property, but it's right behind our property. So that's been filled in many times. And when Buddy Mullin was part of Public Works, they came through and they, and then Panoni was the township engineer at the time, they gave us a blueprint that showed the bins. And I still don't believe that it's not on our property. They said it's in the right-of-way. I don't know exactly what the right-of-way is, but I would really like to find out. So I did stop by the township building earlier this week. I wanted to speak to Mr. Scott, but I was told that he couldn't see me that day. So I went over to municipal authority, so it's in their hands, they're doing some research. So the thing is, we need an engineer. And I don't know whether the municipal authority has the capacity to bring in engineers or whether the township with Craig's, you know, group, whether they can determine just what is going on with that, with that corner. Now fortunately, it is the gable end of the house, which means that the front wall is the, is the bearing wall, not the side. So, so while the, the whole corner has shifted, I have a full-length patio in the front. That has now dropped a little bit because of stone facing has, has space underneath of it. There's no cracks in the drywall.
So John, what is, what question did you wanna ask Ken about?
So I, yeah.
So as a township engineer, can they come out and assess the situation?
Well, if, first of all.
And because it borders both entities.
Well, the municipal authority has engineers and they'll probably have a look at it first. And you're in the right hands over there.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, they have competent engineers as well. So we'll have to wait to see what they, they determine.
Right, because I don't wanna just go out and just hire somebody to do it because if the pipe is actually causing the problem, it's only going to be a, you know, a short-term fix and it's gonna happen again.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
You know, so.
Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do here on the board, but the municipal,
Well, I was just thinking about.
But the municipal authority, they have their own, their own people.
Yeah, I didn't know if they did or not.
They know what they're doing, so I would recommend that you wait and see what they have to say about the problem.
I can tell you what, if you, I mean, our meeting is.
Yeah, we were gonna, we already come to that too, whenever that is, we have to look it up.
Yeah, May, May 8th, right, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Is it May 8th? Hold on a second. It's the second, it's the second Monday. I think it's not the 8th, it's the second Monday.
This Monday's the 6th, so it doesn't need the 13th.
13th.
13th, I might be able to make that up, yeah.
So, I mean, I'll follow up with, with Dalton. And then if you wanna come to that.
Yeah, Barbara was very helpful, she, she was going to look into it. But I thought we'd let the township know that, you know, can't hurt to.
Yeah, and as far as leaks in pipes, I mean, it could wash out, but it would be right around the pipe. But I'll defer the engineers on that because he's telling me, you know, I'm not going to get into that.
Just to touch on why.
I'm not saying it's happening, I'm saying it's a possibility.
So just wait for, again, like Dalton George knows what he's doing and wait and see what they have to say.
The second part of that was really the location of that pipe and whether it's truly in a municipal right-of-way or is it actually on our property.
Again, municipal.
And again, I don't know if that is now the municipal authority's problem or whether the township would be responsible.
Well, thank you for all your comments and let us, you know.
It's probably the municipal authority, they transferred that.
They would know better than anybody.
I would go, I would definitely go to that meeting.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Is that, yeah.
Hi, I'm Austin Ryan, 943 Birch Road. So it was like last year at this point, there was a speed study, I guess, done down Henry Ave.
Did you speak, Walter?
We can't hear you.
Sorry. I'm Austin Ryan, 943 Birch Road. I think last year there was a speed study done down Henry Ave. The, I guess, temporary solution was to put up a, like, speed sign, I guess you call it, which sort of worked, but not really. Basically, you know, people go back speeding after there's nothing there, there's no enforcement. So it's, you know, the issue still persists. I believe there was a decision not to do any traffic calming or anything about it. I don't really get it because people are still going over the speed limit. Yeah, and like people still want, you know, have a safe street. They're, that's fairly busy with pedestrians and cyclists and stuff. So if someone gets hit there, they're gonna be like seriously injured. If you get hit by a car going 30 miles an hour, you're, you're in the hospital or dead. So I was just wondering if there was anything, like, a little more permanent or like a temporary fix to like, I don't know, even like temporary paint and like ollards or something to like slow down and do a speed setting.
Engineers and police are working in tandem. The police will go to different streets where they know there's traffic issues and monitor the traffic and they know which, which ones have the worst, you know? And those are the ones they're addressing the most right now. Like Newtown, they're passing people on Newtown, that's a really narrow road. So there's certain ones, and they will go to everyone. Am I right, chief, that you, that you send people on?
Henry's just at the top of the list, Henry's Air.
Right.
Henry's Air, it's just, it's all by you.
Right.
What I had, I only do so much with what I have.
Yeah, and that's kinda my point, is like, you know, the police are gonna do what they can, that's fine. You know, it's admirable, admirable effort. But they can't fix the fundamental issues with the streets because they're not in control of it. It's, the street's wide, is what it is.
But they determine the amount of traffic and the amount of accidents and all of that, which then is sent forth, set forth to our engineer and it goes from there. But thank you for your comments and we will, you know, if you have a question again, please feel free to ask.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was like a temporary.
There's nothing temporary right now.
The biggest thing though is the, the people that are speeding on Henry Avenue are the residents that live in the neighborhood. We need to be monitoring ourselves and making sure that we're setting the example when we're driving down the street that we're going to speed limit.
Yeah, and I get that.
You know, if we're going to speed limit, the people behind us are stopped doing the speed limit as well, so.
Yeah, I get that. But like, people are driving, you know, they got places to be. You can't like be on it every second while you're driving. It's stressful.
Right.
So people are gonna do what they feel comfortable doing down the road. So if we make it, you know, so they feel a little less comfortable going really fast, it slows them down and it puts less stress on our police officers.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, Pat Boyle, Centennial Station, how y'all doing tonight? I just wanted to thank the police department because even though cars are still passing me on Newtown Road on both sides, and it scares the nonsense out of you. I saw three people pulled over last week for speeding or whatever they were stopped for. So thank you so much for having people out there on, on there. And it is, it's just, it's horrible. And people have no consideration when they're driving and it's just, it's amazing. You know, I mean, getting passed on the right-hand side.
Yeah, somebody almost passed me the other, last night because I was going 25 and they didn't like it.
Right, yeah.
You know, so thank you for the comment, Pat, and thanks for the props for the police department because they are patrolling our streets.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to our consent agenda. Number one, we're gonna consider approval of the Board of Minutes, Supervisors, Minutes stated April 4th, 2024. Secondly, consider approval of strategic plan for the library. Consider approval of resolution authorizing the destruction of certain records, all accounts payable and bank statements with a date on or before December 31st, 2016. All payroll earnings and time cards with a date on or before December 31st, 2020. All duty tow records with a state, date on or before December 31st, 2020. Consider 350 Ivy Land Road, release number two, final from the escrow account in amount of $495,184.51. Consider the Bucks County Emergency Communications Law Enforcement Remote Access Memorandum of Understanding. Consider security proposal for three-year period of $162,000 per year. And consider the fuel and tank Public Works Project Change Order for temporary fuels for $30,000 and for 145-day project completion extension. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janice. Any questions from the supervisory board? Any questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have Chuck Kebok with our finance report.
Bill last dated April 18th, 2024 in the amount of $1,418,064.14. The supplemental bill listed April 30th, 2024 in the amount of $1,071,261.7. The supplemental bill listed April 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,071,261.70, with a grand total of $2,489,321.80.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Now we have Mr. John Ramey up to give us our financial statement. Hi, John.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to keep the good news rolling, so.
We'd like to hear, John.
Yes, John.
So in your package, you'll see the summary for the general fund. Revenues, they rebounded from last month, so we are actually in the positive compared to this through the end of March of last year. Volume is $400,000, which is an increase of 11.6%. The main drivers of that is, from what Bobby was saying, people are paying their taxes early. We're up $296,000 in taxes, without a tax increase, so for us to get that much money earlier, it really helps us, and we're going to go over what we're going to do with all this money later. Another one is the interest income, that's up $30,000 from last year, just in the general fund. The other funds' interest incomes are all doing really well. On the expense side, expenses are up a little over $100,000. It's 3.14%, which all the nerds out there, that's pie, so. Going, comparing the budget, revenues are at 23% compared to this year. Last year, they were 22. Expenses are at 20%, they were 20% last year. So we are trending on the same pace as we were with budget compared to last year, so everything's looking really good in the general fund.
Awesome.
So the really good news, we, we had a great week of receiving grant money. Not just getting approved for grants, we actually got the cash.
Finally, huh?
Oh, right.
Finally?
Yep, so we got a DCD grant for $250,000. I know Brian Monroe's office had a lot to do with that. It's for in-car and body worn cameras for the police department. The current provider went out of business, so we have to replace all the cameras the police wear and are in the cars, so that's going to help with that. The really big one is we finally got a RackP money. This was the grant for all, everything that happened over the Warmminster Community Park. That was $1,720,875. So getting almost, a little over 1.7 million, that's really great news that we've been, I know Lisa Howdyshell did a lot of work, and it was a struggle to get this money, so it's great that we finally have it. So what, what are we going to do with all the money? So that's where, I have a quick little memo, we're going to break it down. What I'd like to do is take $3 million and transfer it over to the high-yield money market that we have in Unives. It's currently making 5.63%. So for every million dollars, we make $4,692 a month. So, and we're dividing that, like, we have different funds that have money in that, and any interest they make, it stays in the fund. The biggest is the capital, so we're, we're making this money and it's staying there for future projects, which is awesome. The first out of the 3 million, we're going to divide it up to 1 million from the general fund. Again, this is the tax revenue, but we're also getting a lot of earned income taxes with people filing their, May, or April 15th tax returns. So we're getting a lot of cash coming in for that, so we'd like to transfer 1 million from there. I think that's going to stay there almost permanently, because we're doing very well. But again, these, this is fully collateralized, so it's insured money and it's fully liquid, so if ever comes that we actually need it, we can pull it out immediately, which is great. Another million dollars from the capital fund, that's mainly coming from the 1.7 that we got from RackP. So we're leaving 700 and some thousand dollars in there for this year's capital expenses, but again, transferring that million to make $4,600 a month over the next couple of months before we even look at next year. And finally, a million dollars from the sanitation fund. The sanitation fund runs very lean, because we don't really want a fund balance. We want the current residents that are paying their trash fees to go pay for, pay for the current trash expenses. But right now, with, again, with all the trash money coming in with the real estate taxes, taking that money, might as well make some money off of it, and will that will ensure that there's no shortfalls in the fund going forward, especially with any increases to next year, because we are on an, an extension. So it's kind of building a little bit of fund balance, just to make sure that we're okay in the future. Again, right now, the current rate that we're making on all of these with our current bank is .05%. So this is over five, almost a 5.6% increase from just by moving money that's going to be sitting there anyway. So that's why I think that's one of the great things about this account, so. And then finally, another great thing I think we're going to do is make an early payment to our pension funds. We currently have an MMO, which is the Minimal Municipal Obligation, which I don't even want to say MMO right now, because we're paying more than MMO this year. It's budgeted, we have an extra 300,000 going to the police pension to try and lower that future liability. So included in the pension payments, this year we have over 3.0, well, right around $3.2 million budgeted, so what I would like to do is pay half of that. So it'd be $1,583,903.50. Make that payment now, since, again, we have the cash, might as well get the money into the fund and start making money off of it. Again, it's all about lowering that future liability, and there's future MMO payments. So the sooner we get it, the money in there, the sooner we can start making money.
Good call.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
That wasn't too long.
No, it wasn't too long, and it's nice to have competent people in charge of our finances, and obviously we see that, that coming true and coming to fruition, so nice job. And I definitely want to thank Brian Monroe for getting that money. Chief, I think our body cams were out of, were at, end of useful life anyway, right?
Yeah, if you're up eight.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, so thanks to State Rep. Brian Monroe for getting us that cash, and, and a real shout-out to Lisa and our staff, because I remember when I first came here and that RackP grant was a train wreck, and it took a lot of our resources with all the missing paperwork and all the other missing pieces to that puzzle. And hats off to Lisa and the staff.
Judy used a word to describe Lisa during that process, he was like holed up in her office for like six months, and Judy said she was very tenacious, and that is a good word to describe her. And thank you, I think it was a really good decision to go with Unives, because look at all the interests that we're accruing.
Yep.
And thank you for the really good report.
Yeah, in, in March alone, we made just under $72,000.
Oh, right.
Again, that's, that's divided over five funds, we're going to have six funds making more money, dividing that off.
Nice.
So once we get the money over there, I think the check's been signed and I don't want to take it to the bank tomorrow.
Okay.
And I want to add one more comment, I'm glad that you're, we're paying down the MMO, I like the, looking towards the future and then getting that paid off.
Well, the MMO will never be paid off.
Oh, I know, it'll never be paid off, but I like the fact that we're bringing it down.
That's a fantasy. Yeah, well, to lower it, it, you know, a lot, there's a lot more than just us paying it down, but, you know. You're doing a great job. And you know what, it's nice to dollar-cost average, we put a million in now, a million in later, and we catch the stock market on a rebound.
And usually, we don't make this payment, we make the full payment all in October, after we get the state aid. So really what we're doing is, out of the 1.6 million we're paying now, we're going to get about $900,000 from the state, in state aid, so we'll only have like a $600,000 payment out of our own pockets, because we'll get the money, then the check has to go out, so that's, we're paying most of our out-of-pocket costs now.
So again, you know, this, this fantasy or fallacy of paying off the pension debt is, is, you know, we could put $20 million in there today, and if the stock market takes a real correction, we just lost $20 million. So it doesn't make any sense to, to just, that's, that's, that's a bad financial practice.
Yeah, and that's why we have MMOs.
Exactly.
Actually, where you just calculate them, say, this is what you need to put in, and you can put it in.
Exactly. And our, and all, and, and Tom brings this up all the time, and I just want to reiterate this to everybody that's listening and everybody here, our pension funds are healthy. They're not in trouble, unlike my pension fund.
Which is not healthy.
I'm talking about the, the painless pension fund, it is not healthy, no. So we're, we're in pretty good shape, and, and again, hats off to you, John, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one last comment, give Sixers.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, yes, go Sixers. Okay. Moving along, we have no unfinished business, no new business, Professionals Report, Mr. Tom Scott.
What do you got for us, Tom?
Yeah, Tom, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I want to add my, my thanks to Lisa Howdyshell, who did an outstanding job landing this RackP funding, which, as an, as an institution, the township has waited on it since before I got here in December of 2021. And there were other people involved, don't get me wrong, John's office, Craig's firm, the Justice, Jessica's Department too, but it was Lisa that did 90% of the last year and a half worth of work to get. First, the state consultant had to approve it. This is a consultant that the state uses to approve whether or not we've done everything we're supposed to be doing. And, and I know that's, it sounds like a nothing, but if you could see what this paperwork looked like, and then it had to go to the Office of the Budget, so it was twice approved, twice baked.
And it was also supposed to be an actively managed grant.
Yes.
Which it was not.
Right.
Which was the crux of the problem.
Yeah, quite frankly, it was being ignored.
That's right.
Until, until, you know, we, we, until Lisa and I looked at it, and she graciously volunteered to land it. Pause for laughter. It was, we were in trouble, and there were times, you know, even she was telling me the other day, "Oh yeah, we just got notice that the, the state says we're going to get the check," like, ma'am, like, well, I'll believe it when I see it. And anybody else that ever brings up RackP grants, it's not going to get a Christmas card from me. I also want to thank, you know, I want to follow up on, on Joe Veltin's earlier presentation, looks like he left though, but, you know, he's, he's, he's putting a lot of work into establishing the cohesiveness of the new employees within our organization and within another organization. Not easy to do. So he's done a great job building that program from scratch. And as far as, you know, some of the things that we do each day around here that don't really get a lot of attention, you know, our, our operational people are out in the streets all the time, police, fire, LNI, Public Works, Parks and Rec. You see them, you see the trucks, you see the cars, sometimes you wave, sometimes you don't, that's all right. Pause for laughter. But these are hard-working men and women, so, you know, give them a wave, all right? That's all I have for now, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Now we'll have Mr. Randy Flager, our solicitor.
Yeah, good evening, Council Supervisors. We issued our litigation report. Oh, that question you had earlier about what that case was, that's just the, that's the case that's being handled by an insurance company. Somebody made a claim, which just, that, that, there's no, it's nothing that we have any concern. I was just going to say, following up on this evening's theme, when we started, how many years is it now? Five, six years?
Five.
Okay, five years ago, this township was broke and on fire, and I, I guess I got to how proud I am of all of you, all five of you, and some of your predecessors for pulling yourself out of the tailspin, hiring really good people to manage your township, professional people like Tom Scott and everybody else, your finance people and everybody else here, I'm looking at everyone. And what a difference, your park's beautiful, the roads, I mean, things are just, it's, it's amazing.
It is.
It's amazing, and you're going to be congratulated. That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Flager. Now, now we're going to go to.
Last but not least.
Mr. Craig Kennard, our engineer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any changes or additions to our May Engineers' Report, however, you will have a couple land development projects for the June meeting. Originally, it was going to be three small ones, one is going to have to go to the zoning hearing board, they notified the township staff in my office, I think, yesterday, so they're off, but you'll have two smaller ones and a conditional use hearing. They shouldn't be too long, they're smaller projects, but you will have several to go through at your next meeting, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tom, Mr. Tom Scott is going to announce upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President, this is a big announcement, if the board consents, I would ask that the scheduled meeting for May the 16th be canceled, as we have no additional business to transact this month with the Board of Supervisors, and that the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors be on Thursday, June 20th?
You want to show it?
Third.
Third Thursday.
20th?
20th?
20th, June 20th. Rather than the first Thursday of June, we would go to the third Thursday of June to help with scheduling around the Memorial Day holiday.
And Fourth of July.
And then we would do the same thing in July for the, because of the Fourth of July holiday.
July 18th.
Right, okay, thank you.
So June 20th?
June 20th.
July 18th.
July 18th, third Thursday, okay.
I believe you said August as well, Mr. Scott.
Well, yeah, and then we would, to keep the theme going for the summer, do the same thing in August, meet on the third Thursday in August.
August 15th.
Which is August 15th.
Okay.
I'd ask this, thank you.
Any objections? You guys all, everybody okay with that, those dates?
What, what's the July date?
18th.
18th.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
No objections.
June and July, I'm good. June and July, I'm good. I don't know about August, from, I think, my tour back to school, I'll find out.
All right, at this time we have Supervisor's comments, and we'll start with Janice again. Oh, I'm sorry.
On, on the agenda, you had it listed for public comment at this time?
No, we.
I know you announced something.
Right, we did.
So I don't know if we're having a second round.
It, it, yeah, it was changed too earlier.
I heard it on TV.
Yes, it was passed last month, but it, yes. Thank you.
I just had a couple quick comments.
Thank you.
After the meeting?
No, it's up to the Chair. I was just saying, if you want to talk to me after the meeting.
Do you want to talk to me?
This was just, just some random thing, a quick comment.
Sure.
So the first one was about the public comment at this time. John Kaposi from 5 for Penrose Lane. The second one, I wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but I saw, I saw a, an article about Tesla being sold by, by the company that owns it now. I don't know if it's just change in hands, but whether that's a concern for Warmminster residents, it's not going to close down or anything.
Tesla wasn't sold.
Not, but it's, it's on the market for sale.
For investors.
Tesla has a 12-year lease.
Right, okay, so whoever takes over will, will continue that.
It's just a real estate transaction.
That's all it is.
So second of all, I wanted to thank our esteemed celebrity here, I saw you on, on the commercial with.
I saw it too.
Yeah, so I see the agents knocking at the door, your Hollywood agent.
Yeah, they just keep beating the door down, I can't wait. On my way to Hollywood.
Yeah, right, it was a good commercial, though, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I was wondering if you wanted to mention that.
I have a quick question. On the upcoming meetings, it has it on May 20, Monday, May 27th, is a EAC meeting that is also Memorial Day, so I'm assuming there will not be an EAC meeting on Memorial Day?[1695.85]
No, they won't, they won't be meeting on...
No, you are correct, we will not, the EAC will not be meeting in the evening of Memorial Day.
There you go.
You don't have to worry.
Slackers.
They're meeting on the 20th?
Yes.
All right, Janice, any supervisor comments?